Counsel Williams. Here.
Counsel Williams.
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments. Mr. Solicitor, are there any public comments that have been sent in?
Yes, Your Honor. First public comment is from Kay Richardson, 2106 West Sixth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Mayor Kirkland, I was at the 424 March. I heard several people ask you to speak to the people why you didn't address us? Question mark. Instead, you sat in the car right across the street from where we were. Were you there in support of the march for clean air or opposed to it? Or was that an intimidation move? Question mark.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Thank you for your questions. Let me respond to them in the order they were received. I did not address the persons at the march. I did not organize that march. I was simply an observer of the march. I happened upon the march. It was never sanctioned by the city, or no one from the march had called anyone from the city and asked them to participate. That's the first answer to your first question. You said, "Instead, I sat in my car across the street from where we were." Yes, I sat in my car simply to observe. I wanted to hear what was going on. Wanted to hear some of the comments from some of the persons. Were you in support of the march for clean air or opposed to it? I was opposed to a march that put a whole lot of people's lives in danger. Ms. Richardson, they marched down a highway, a four-lane highway, 291. They drove cars down a four-lane highway, 291. You put the organizers of the march put people's lives in grave danger. 291 is a state highway. And I don't even think that you had a permit, or they had a permit, from the state, once again, a state highway, from the state to do so. Nor did they have any state troopers leading their march for their safety. That was a very dangerous move by the organizers. I just thank God that no one was hurt in that process. Am I opposed to clean air? No, ma'am. Intimidation? I don't consider intimidation simply by me sitting in my car, listening to what folks had to say. As a matter of fact, I might have felt a little intimidated because, as I sat in my car, if you watched, the folks came over to me while I was sitting in my car with microphones. Some of them were saying some terrible things. And I simply chose not to speak to any of the issues. So, thank you, Ms. Richardson, for your questions. I hope I've answered them sufficiently.
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition, there is another public comment from Anita Littleton, 330 West Ninth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Mr. Harris Strand directs the Chester Environmental Partnership, which is listed on Covanta's website as a trusted source of information. Mr. Strand is also the head of the Chester Stormwater Authority, having been appointed by the Kirkland administration. Is Mr. Strand or the authority receiving any consideration for CEP's endorsement of Covanta in Chester?
Ms. Littleton, I think that you have to have that conversation with Reverend Dr. Strand. I do not conduct business with Stormwater Authority. I do not conduct the business of CEP. So, I would hope that you would address your questions to Reverend Dr. Strand. I'm sure if you call over to the Stormwater Authority, he'll be more than glad to respond to your question.
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition, there is a public comment from Louise Morse, 122 Thurlow Street, Chester, PA 19013. I apologize, it's Louis S. Morse Senior, not Louise. Good morning. I am a longtime resident here in the city of Chester. I am responding to the minutes that I read regarding this facility. I have a few questions. One, why do I have to smell trash from trucks traveling down 291? Your Honor, there are a series of questions. Perhaps you want to answer them as we proceed.
Yeah. Mr. Morse, good morning. I think if this is the same Morse family, I know the family personally. There are a number of vehicles, including the trash trucks that travel down 291. We even have some of our own city vehicles that travel down 291 to dispose of bulk trash and other things. I just find it hard to distinguish which truck is which. Unfortunately, we have to dispose of our waste here in the community. Hopefully, the trucks are covered as well as possible. And what folks, a lot of folks don't understand, many of our smells come even from Jersey and other industries down on the waterfront. This is an industrial community. It always has been, and it probably always will be. And so, some smells we will not be able to avoid, but we will make sure that each and every facility follows the guidelines of EPA and DEP.
Number two, trucks travel at unsafe speeds and down 291. Why do we have to endure the unsafe conditions where children play?
And I'm not being smart, Mr. Morse, but I'm hoping and praying that our children are not playing on 291. That looks like what your question is saying. I'm hoping and praying that they're not playing on 291. And not only do the trucks travel at unsafe speeds at times, but the vehicles, cars, travel at unsafe speeds on 291. That will be addressed by our police, my police department, as soon as possible. We have been ticketing persons. Unfortunately, we can't catch them all, but we will address that.
Thank you. Number three, the dirt that comes from the trucks is horrible, and we are cleaning inside our homes daily from the dust outside of our homes. It's discouraging. Why do we have to live under these conditions?
Mr. Morse, dirt and dust comes, I guess, in everybody's home. I think everybody in our city find themselves dusting and polishing and washing their cars because of the dirt and dust that... We are surrounded by 291. We have I-95. We have Ninth Street. We have the Commodore Bridge. We have a number of highways and roadways in our city. And with that comes, with that traffic comes dust. Unfortunately, we cannot control that. It is just a part of our daily living.
Thank you. Number four, my home has structural damage from the trucks traveling behind my house. What is the city going to do about the damage in my and other homes from Covanta trucks?
Mr. Morse, if you can prove, we can, if you would like to call us and talk to our city engineer and show us and prove to us that these trucks from Covanta have caused structural damage to your home, we will be the first ones to address that issue. We have a city engineer. If you call the city and address that issue, we will see how we correct it if the damage has been done by Covanta.
Number five, your inspectors for this facility, I'm sure, work during the day. The violations occur to our air quality at night or early in the morning when no one can hear or see us. Did you know that is happening?
That is why we have EPA and DEP in place. They have systems in place 24/7 to find out who the violators are, whether it be Covanta, whether it be Delcora, or any other industry in the area.
Six, who is responsible for getting abandoned vehicles off our street? There are at least three abandoned cars without license plates on our street right now. We have a parking problem.
Mr. Morse, if there are abandoned cars on your streets, and you've just identified that to me, I will have my police department, my police department handle those abandoned vehicles. We'll come down, we'll tag the vehicles. After tagging the vehicles for a number, after vehicles being tagged for a number of days, if they are not moved, we will have them towed.
Number seven, who is responsible for neighbors not cutting their grass or keeping their house maintained? We have a problem in our neighborhood. Who is monitoring these issues?
The neighbors. The neighbors are responsible. And it would be nice to have a conversation with your neighbor and let your neighbor know that we do have an ordinance for grass, highway grass. If you would like our persons to come through because of our limited staff, we will get down to your area, and we will either warn your neighbor or find your neighbor. But one of the best ways to do it is to be able to talk to your neighbor in a manner that is respectful to one another and let them know what your concerns are. If that does not work, we will still send our persons down. I said, as I said before, we have limited staff to go down and inspect the area. If the grass is overgrown, we have the ability to find the individuals.
Eight, why are we entertaining bringing more trash to our city when we are not able to maintain our city streets and neighborhoods now with what's coming into the facility presently?
You say now that, why, now we entertaining bringing more trash? That's a new one to me. Everyone keeps saying about this contract that we have not seen or entertained. So, I, that question, to answer your question, that is not the case.
And last, I am not against industry for growth, but this industry is not a good neighbor. Covanta must be stopped in this community. Thank you.
And let me just, and I appreciate you, Mr. Morse, for your comments and your concerns. Let me give you a little history. Covanta, which was Trash to Steam, which is Westinghouse, was brought to this community many, many years ago under another administration. I won't get into the politics of it all. Under another administration, not this administration. As a matter of fact, I, as mayor, stood with others and fought Westinghouse and the Trash to Steam companies that were here. They were in violation of air quality. They were in violation of the quality of life down in that area. And we fought them tooth and nail. Many of these persons who were writing or who came into the city on Saturday, matter of fact, ninety-nine percent of them were never involved in the fight. So, in comes Covanta. And Covanta wants to develop a good relationship. They took over the trash facility, and they wanted to develop a good relationship with the community. And so, we started putting in guidelines. We started putting in boards. We started meeting with them. And they started working vigorously with EPA and DEP. Now that they've done that, now that they've put everything in place and in proper... If you really, 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 really look at the books, you'll find that over the last 10 years, there has not been one violation by Covanta. But there have been violations by other industries down on the waterfront. I understand this is a political season. I understand that. Because it's kind of strange that Covanta just now comes up after all these years. Covanta is, I'll say it very clearly and very loudly, Covanta is a good partner and neighbor here. You may not like the smell. Maybe you haven't gone down to Delcora. Let me say that again. You do know what Delcora does, I hope. Sometimes what you smell is not trash. I implore you, I implore every citizen in this community, visit Covanta, visit Delcora, visit the industries, visit all the industries up on our waterfront before you make a judgment on one industry. I encourage you to do that. Because once this election is over, they'll disappear. Those same people will disappear, and they'll never come back to talk about Covanta or any other industry until the next two years. It's the same thing over and over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no further admissible public comments. I will note for the record, all public comments must include a Chester address to be read, and those who instruct the city not to read their address will not be read.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And thank you for your comments. And we do appreciate them. I do appreciate those who are genuinely concerned about our community and the health of our community and the young persons, as well as seniors in our community. All of our residents are important. And we appreciate your comments, whether, we appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize promotional testing to be given by the Civil Service Board to all eligible candidates for the following position in the Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs. Position is corporal slash detective. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of Fire Cadet, Chester Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective April 14, 2021, at an hourly rate of $14.52 per hour on a per diem basis, not to exceed 40 hours a week with no benefits. Ashla Delgado, Kinsley Corbin, Eric Garrett, Colin Flanagan, Thomas Morris, Matthew Morgan, Timothy Plant, Dominique Dimenmo, Adrian Toro. Further, that the appointment of said individuals as fire cadets for the city is contingent upon satisfactory completion of all training, evaluations, and testings required to graduate the Fire Academy courses that apply to skills required by the Chester Fire Department. Further, upon graduation, said employment with the city as an apprentice firefighter shall be based upon availability. Further, if employed as a firefighter for the City of Chester, said individual is required to reside in the City of Chester for the first five years of employment. Any firefighter not residing in the City of Chester must do so within 90 days of their date of hire as a permanent employee and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the following individual has requested a handicap parking zone. Linda Johnson, I'm sorry, Linda Johnson, 1140 Pine Lane, Chester, PA 19013. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, it has been determined the aforementioned individual has met all of the required criteria and has a need for said handicap parking zone. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 1100 block of Pine Lane in the City of Chester. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the amended forms and applications which sets forth the fees and the terms and conditions for the following: Block party form, community rental application, Memorial Park swimming application, and tag day permit. Further, these amendments will take effect immediately upon the passage of this resolution. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated April 9, 2021, and April 23, 2021, attached hereto and made a part herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number three, reading an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 1103 entitled "Licensing Provisions of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended to change subsection 1103.02B entitled "Application: License and Inspection Fees by increasing the fees and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith."
I move that we pass Bill number three on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill number three on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
We do have bid bonds.
Bid openings.
Bid openings. The first one is 2021 Chester City Demolition Contract Number One. And it's from BRB Contractors, 204 Airport Road, Pottstown, Pennsylvania, 19464. Okay, the base bid total is $195,700. The alternate bid is $60,000. The bid bond is 10% of the bid amount. The next company is Peoples and Sons LLC, 501 West 22nd Street, PO Box 604, Chester, PA 19013. The bid bond is... Okay. The base bid... The base bid is $289,750. The alternate, the alternate bid is $58,750.
Question, what's that second number that you're saying? The alternate?
The alternate bid? $58,750. Okay, the bid bond is $499,000.
Which, which?
For what?
Which one is that?
They didn't do the 10%.
They just...
Correct.
So, so where it says bond?
Bid bond?
Bond cash?
They have a, instead of it saying 10%, they put in a figure.
Okay.
Of $499,000.
And, and, Mr. Glante, alternate, what's the, what are the differences? The bid bond being 195, for the first one, 195,700, and then the alternate of $60,000?
So, there is a property that the property owner has taken out warrants on, but they haven't done a lot of work to it. So, we put that as an alternate in case they at some point decide to do additional work on the property. That's why we have an alternate.
Okay.
So, if we proceed with demolition and they come back and say, "Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of it on our own," that's a possibility, but just left it as an alternate.
Okay, okay, just trying to figure it out. Thank you.
The next bid opening is for Memorial Park Football Field Lighting Project. And it's from AJM Electric, Inc., 2333 Concord Road, Chester Township, PA 19013. Okay, so, base proposal?
No.
The bid bond is 10%. Okay, the base proposal is $97,000. It's just one price, that's it.
There is an alternate as well. And it's a, um, it's a deduct alternate for, that's the deduct. So it was an alternate lighting fixture in the bid. So we had the base lighting fixture and then an alternate lighting fixture. So there's the base bid, which is the 97,000. And if they use the alternate fixture, they're offering a deduct of 6,000. Yep.
6,000?
Yeah. So that's it for that one. The next bid is from JT Electrical LLC, 322 Alice Dunn Road, Springfield, PA 19064. Looks like the base proposal is $109,000. The bid security is 10%. Then it has a deduct sum of $6,309. Okay. Okay, so that's that one. The final bid is Lenny Electric Corporation, 1020 Andrew Drive, West Chester, PA 19380. The base proposal is 87,155.61. There is a... There is a 10% bid amount. Okay, so just through the deducts. The deduct sum is 79,604.55.
Say that again.
Okay, the bid bond is 10%. That's it? That's all of the bids, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Mr. Solicitor, are there any more public comments?
There are no further public comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Thank you, council. I do want to recognize some of Chester's finest. Our boys, well, boys, our football team, Chester High School Football Team, are the champions, are champions here in Delaware County. And we are so proud of them here at City Hall. We will be doing something special for them at our next council meeting. And very ni, just a very nice presentation of our football team, our cheerleaders, our coaches. A shout out to Coach Bell for an awesome and fantastic season. We could not honor our football players without honoring our cheerleaders. And so we're gonna do something special for them on May the 12th, at our council meeting and after our council meeting, to show our appreciation, our love. Also, our All Delco Player of the Year is from Chester. Kirill Watkins. We want to recognize him as well for being the athlete and student that he is. We have some awesome talent here in the City of Chester, the City of Champions. I remember when the soccer stadium, the soccer team came here, Philadelphia Union came here. And we were very clear with them when they got here that they have to recognize that this is a city of champions. So therefore, the Philadelphia Union has to live up to that same bill. So a shout out to Coach Bell and our basketball coach. Keith Taylor. Our basketball coach, Keith Taylor, for excellent job during these trying times. Thank you all. With that said, this meeting is now adjourned. Have an awesome day.